Okay, it's 5:30 PM. I'm going to call the December 15th, 2021 Mashpee Public Schools School Committee meeting to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd also like to acknowledge and recognize that the Mashpee Public Schools honor the many generations of Wampanoak people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business is to ratify tonight's agenda. We know that we will not have a tribal representative tonight, so other than that, I'm not aware of any changes. Does anyone have any emotion or any comments?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the change of the tribal representative.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thanks, Matt. So, a motion by Kathy, a second by Matt. Do we have any comments or discussion on any other items? Okay, Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so the agenda is ratified. Do we have any public comment?
There's nothing in the chat at this time.
All right, you're cruising. So now I'm going to welcome folks from Gale Associates to talk to us about the MMHS Multi-Use Artificial Turf Stadium Project.
Thank you, everyone. My name's Kathy Herbal. I am with Gale Associates. We've been hired by the Department of Public Works to do the design for the turf field, the stadium field at the high school, middle school in Mashpee. Just first briefly, just going to review your existing fields and some of the concerns and issues and why this project is where it is today. First off, starting off with your grass, you have grass football field, multipurpose field. The field has been used very heavily, has some compaction issues and such, and therefore, when you have a wet season or by the end of, say, the fall season, the center of the field, goal areas and such, get pretty much unplayable. And I know, based on Matt's comments, at times, they haven't been able to play on the field. The other issue we have is you have a track that's past its useful life. I know a few years ago, they actually pursued getting a new track in place, which is when the kind of comment came up, well, if we're doing a new track, perhaps we should consider and study doing the field and the track at the same time. Just so you understand, the existing track is like a road. There's pavement underneath it, there's stone, and there's pavement asphalt, just like parking lot, and then it gets a nice coating on top, that rubbery red coating that you see on the tracks, and then it's striped and such for events. Your existing track now is six lanes, pretty much all the way around, with eight lanes in your straightaway. You have existing bleachers, you have existing lights, both of which we are not intending to do any modifications to at this time. We will be doing some improvements to walkways and such, just to make the project a little more feasible. So why turf field, let me just move. This is what we call our 90% design set, consisting of various drawings, cover sheets, details. We go into demolition, things along those lines. What I'm going to do is go right to what we call our layout plan, just to kind of take you through what's proposed. Like I said, it doesn't look a heck of a lot different than what your existing field looks like, with the exception of what we're now planning to do is demolish your track. Your existing track currently has a 108-foot radius. We're looking on your corners. We're looking to increase that because what happens with the smaller radius, it squeezes your fields. So fields, dimensions for lacrosse, women's soccer, which are larger fields than like a football field, it gives you the opportunity to expand those fields, to be larger, but also to give you what we call safety runout, so that you don't just go right off the field and onto the track. You have, you know, a grace period of turf before. Again, it's called a runout. It's a safety factor. So the track we're proposing, track construction will be complete demolition of the existing track. We're going to come in, we're going to pulverize the existing track, like I said, increase these radiuses to 118. And what we do with the pulverizing, then we come back, we reclaim that existing pavement and put that down as our base, and then come back in, meet the section that we've specified for the track. It's going to be like eight inches of asphalt, and then we come back in with our proposed track surface. What we're proposing is what we call a BSS 100, which is a pretty standard track surface. It's by Bunyan, and it's pretty typical. Most high schools in this area have it. It's probably not the Cadillac of track surfaces, but very durable and should last the school many years. So, and then, in addition to the track, as I said, we'll be doing a turf field. The turf field, what we're planning to do is have multi-sports, as we said. We have football, we have men's and women's lacrosse, soccer, and we could also fit field hockey. Some of those fields will be actually what we call tufted in the turf, where they actually put the lines right into the fibers, and then others will just be marked so that they can be painted and, you know, changed around based on use. The field will also include what we call what we're proposing. First off, if you can kind of envision your section for the field, is we're going to have a shock pad. Shock pads have become very popular due to all the so-called concussion protocols. They basically help your field meet what we call our GMAX and hip testing, which is really just tests where we pretty much drop a steel ball down on the field and see the pressure and what the head or the equipment receives. We're proposing kind of a middle-of-the-line shock pad, because what we're going to also do, you go through, you have your shock pad, then you have your, what we call, this is your turf, this is your fibers, this is what you call your infill height, if anybody refers to that. This is what we call a dual fiber. What it does is it has single grass blades, and you're welcome to look later, but it also has sections that are almost like webbed, and what that does is help hold the infill in place, so that it holds it up, but also, you know, keeps it from migrating and keeps it in the field. Then, in addition to that, what the committee's discussed for what we call the infill, is we're proposing, we have a couple examples up here, but what the committee is leaning towards either what we call a TPE, which is a thermoplastic elaster, which is a man-made coated, just plastic pellet. But the other one they're considering is what we call Envirofil, which is a coated sand. Both of these are more environmentally friendly than the so-called crumb rubber, even though the crumb rubber, there are no real technical studies to prove that the crumb rubber has an issue. Many communities have gone away from it, and with much success, the turf companies have obviously come up with the infills to meet those demands. So the turf field, basically what we come in and do for the turf field, is we come in, we move the topsoil from the existing grass field, go down about 10 to 12 inches underneath that. You'll have a, there's an underdrain system, then we put back stone, and then you'll have your, the shock pad, the turf, and then with your infill in it, and it'll bring that back to grade. Other things that we're proposing as part of the project, since the track is going to be getting modified and its geometry slightly on the ends, we're going to be doing a completely new fencing around the inside of the track. We'll be modifying the outer fence. There's a six-foot outer existing fence that we'll be modifying only in areas where we are changing its configuration. What we've done also is your, what we call the D areas, as you see on the end, they look like Ds. Those will also be track surface, the same as the track. It allows us to put some of your field events, where on here, you can see with the grass, your field events kind of ran like along the play area, and what this does is allow us to get those field events out of those areas, open the field, again, give you more safety area, less conflict on the field. We're able to put the high jump at the end, your long jump, triple jumps on this end, and we've relocated the shock put over here on the west side of the field. This would be, this is new. And like you said, here, you can see our new fence, just the fence that's extending around that proposed area. Also, as part of the project, we've been asked to extend the water line from the high school, a two-inch line over to service the existing concession stand, the field. We're going to have a hydration station for kids to fill their water bottles and such, and then also run a line to the field, just to, during the summer, when it's very hot, sometimes it's, the field's watered to cool them down a little bit, but without the, since you're not using crumb rubber, they don't get as hot. The crumb rubber fields get a lot hotter, but the turf does get a little hotter than normal grass. But in some areas, it's not even needed, but we do it just as a precaution. We have proposed safety netting down each of the end zones, so people can be in the D areas or on the track. It's more, our concern is the goals, people shooting lacrosse balls and not, you know, hitting somebody and keeping it safe. I think with that, you know, the Wyatt turf field, I think, obviously, maintenance is a big one. You're not maintaining the field. It's minimal cost. Also, it's, you're not using fertilizers and such on the grasses. It also, the school, the community, has a large demand for field use, and what this does in combination with the lights you already have, it gives you that much more playing time for, you know, whether it's high school, youth sports, whatever, which just provides more opportunity for everyone to get access. And what we also did was just improve some of the walkways around the field, just to make it all like a nice package. And I know Catherine has some nice 3D rendering that you can take a look at to just give you a sense of what the finished product would look like.
Thanks, Catherine. Oh, it's beautiful. Thank you, Catherine. How many of these do we have?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
How many of these do we have, Catherine?
I have enough for each of you.
Okay. Can you give one to the Mashpee Public Schools, please?
Or I can email it.
Is that okay? All right.
No, Catherine, if there's anything you wanted to add about the fact we've gotten three or four.
Just, I guess, a little bit of history. So as Kathy had mentioned, we first started looking at a field improvement project back in 2018 as part of our FY '20 capital planning. At that time, similar to what we're doing today, we had filed an application with Community Preservation Committee for funding of the track itself and then the capital CIP committee for the field. The decision was made that rather than funding just that project, that we should do a master plan for the entire athletic complex at the middle high school. So we did receive funding in that fiscal year for $30,000 as a result of that. Then following there, we actually had proposed a much larger project, which included not only the stadium field, but also improvements to the upper field, what are called the upper field at the middle high school, to convert those to synthetic surfacing as well. That was almost a million-dollar project. Because of other capital projects that were in the town's queue, the decision was made to postpone any action on the fields. So this year, we came back through the process, and after some discussion, decided to go back to, for this year, just the stadium field, see if that addressed the needs of the school, of the community, you know, allowing us to revisit the upper field in the future if needed, but let's see if this would address the issues with not having enough field space for the existing programs at the school. And I guess, as we talked about at a meeting earlier today, there really are three, I guess, you know, three options before the town. You know, move forward with this project, which would give us the ability to continue and to support the existing programs at Hocky School, as well as, as Kathy mentioned, you know, open the field up to play and use by members of the community, by youth leagues and others, build additional fields, additional grass fields, to support the existing program, or look at reducing the program. It's just, as the fields are currently laid out, you just cannot support the existing athletic program, I guess, at the level that we would like to. And the athletic director is here as well, if they can answer any questions or add comments.
Sure. Just to kind of echo what Catherine had to say, and obviously with Gale here, Gale's the foremost authority on fields, the East Coast, and they've been great to work with. The issues we've had, certainly with our fields, are water retention's a huge issue within our upper field. It's pretty much, we get a half a meter rate, we get shut down for three days. That affects our upper soccer field, that affects our lacrosse field in the spring. We actually went over our spring, not last year, but two years ago. We had 103 changes with rainouts, with game movements, et cetera. We just can't get an update on that field. That was one of the, that was one of the impetus to move towards turf several years ago. The other thing is with the expansion of lacrosse, our fields take a beating on those fields that use lacrosse. We actually only use the stadium for football games right now and senior nights. Football only practice there one day a week. We use the upper fields outside of the stadium and struggle with those fields. So right now, what's happening is the wear and tear on the fields. The growing seasons are very short, so trying to reseed or trying to overseed is becoming really problematic in terms of having the DPW have that timeframe to repair those fields. So right now, the plan would be with turf field is, the ability to move every single game, or at least Monday through Friday, a game every single day, possibly games one after another on a turf field, because you don't have the wear and tear on the turf field. Turf field takes infinite use for 10 to 12 years, especially when it's groomed right. You can really extend the length of that field and how long that field will survive for and be playable. We've also struggled, obviously, with the number of kids we have participating right now. So while it's a high school, it's a 450-kid high school, we have middle school athletics that participate on those fields as well. So for something like soccer, we have six teams in soccer, but we have basically two areas with soccer fields. So we struggle getting our teams on at certain times. We try to put our middle school kids on early, which pushes our high school kids later and later. So when you open up a turf field, that allows us to practice there every day in the preseason, which will open up a field, which will help kind of take that glut of kids trying to get on fields and minimize those issues as well. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of pros, obviously, to turf fields. Money is obviously the con in so many ways. Just kind of for your background knowledge, our league, we're in the South Shore League, it's a 10-team league. The only schools right now without turf in our league are Mashpee and Rockland. Rockland has a project slated for the end of 2022. It should be completed by 2023. We would be the only school without turf. These schools all want to turf for the same reason. They're running into the same problems as well. Grass fields, the weather hasn't gotten any better. Springs here are tough. We send most of our games in April. We end up sending away. So we play lacrosse, those games have to pretty much be moved in the first week of April towards the end of the schedule. We run into the same problem in the fall. We actually had a boys' tournament soccer game. We've had to move to sandwich. Last year was really telling. We moved football into fall, too, and during that time period of fall, too, we played all of our games away. We just, the field wasn't playable. That kind of gets you an idea of where our fields are, where they lay in that spring period, that March, April, April period when we start for spring sports, and running those issues, obviously, late in the fall as well. So I mean, I think we're here to obviously take questions. If you guys have any questions for us about how the field would be used, the usage of it, obviously with the dimensions and specifics, Catherine can help on that, Kathy as well.
Do you guys want to ask questions now, or do you want to wait to get the price tag and the?
I just realized I didn't tell you.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, maybe go ahead and finish talking about the price tag and then the plan for financing it.
So I know you do have detailed estimates that Ashley didn't provide those to everyone. So that is the project cost. We are still carrying a 20% contingency, just with the way materials cost and inflation right now we're going. We just felt, even though we're at 90% scope or design stage, we felt that we should still continue to carry that 20%. In the town's project, which is not included in that estimate, we are including $210,000 for upgrading the existing field lighting. We are proposing to convert the lighting to LED. We're working with Cape Light Contact and are expecting that we'll get some rebate through them for the improvement in energy efficiency, but that is the cost for upgrading the lights, which will make them much better than what they are currently. So the request before the town, which is split between Community Preservation and the Capital Improvement Plan, is $2,970,350.
And I think the committee's aware that you presented to CPC, but you might want to mention that.
Sure. So we just submitted an application to Community Preservation for $1,709,400. That is specifically for the mobilization costs and costs associated with the track. Community Preservation specifically excludes synthetic turf fields from being an eligible project, but the track itself and the other associated costs are eligible. So we are asking for that funding through Community Preservation. We had an initial meeting at the beginning of this month, right, and they will continue their meeting until January, when they will make a decision. The balance of the funds, which is just over $1.25 million, would be through the town's capital plan. We have not had a meeting with the CIP committee yet.
Great, thank you. All right, so I think some of you guys are hearing some of this, maybe, detail for the first time, so I'll defer to any questions that Kathy or Matt, if you guys want to start.
Hi, you want to go? I don't know if you have your mic on?
Should be.
There you go. Well, he's reading, so I'll go. So I see this list, TPE, in the quote.
Yep.
Is that the better, like, in terms of those two fills? I know you explained that, you know, one is a coated sand and the other is like a synthetic.
Right.
Is one better than the other? What was the, what, if I could speak, that would help. What made you go with the TPE in the quote versus the Envirofil?
Well, the TPE, the price for the TPE and the Envirofil are almost the same.
Okay.
So the school still has the opportunity to select which one they want, and what we've recommended and we've communicated is having the school, the AD, go to some of these fields with similar installations and see what they like better. The TPE, the only real drawback, the Envirofil versus the TPE, the Envirofil can be a tad more abrasive. It's sand. It's coated sand, so it's, you know, it's a tad sharper, but, you know, we have not heard any, you know, the manufacturer tells you that, but we have not really had athletes in that complain or have an issue with it. And we've done field, Hopkinton, we did there, it's a baseball softball, huge multipurpose field. They love the Envirofil.
Which is this one here?
It's the Envirofil at the top, when it looks kind of sandy.
Okay.
And they're replacing their town, their park and rec field, which is a dual, double side-by-side turf field, and they like the high school field so much, they're doing the exact same thing with the Envirofil, same shock pad and all of that as well. Beverly, we just did a field this summer for Beverly, same thing. They love the Envirofil. And what we'll do, too, is, as Catherine said, we're keeping the contingency a little higher, only because COVID, we, you know, we're getting some vibes of, and I think everyone's heard, there's, you know, trucking issues, product issues, that, you know, we could run in some additional costs. As we get closer, we'll be with, you know, what's available, what can we make sure we're going to get on, you know, just make sure there's no issues with getting it to the field. And like I said, it really comes down to what the school wants, and, you know, we usually recommend, go out and see it, walk on the stuff, especially like the ADs, maybe with a couple athletes, and see what it's all about.
Okay.
But as far as playability and that, they're the same.
They're the same, okay. And cost, they're the same, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don, you have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, lean in, so everyone can hear.
First of all, is there a fence around the turf field itself, or is there just a fence around the outside?
Okay, there's, there's.
Or is there two?
There's two fences. One is around the outside of the track. That will be all new, because the track's going to kind of get reconfigured. So there is an existing fence there now. That fence will go away, because it's not in the best shape, and because we have to reconfigure it, you know, we're putting in new around the, just around, this is the track, you see your lanes, this is the fence with the little X's here, and then there's a walkway all the way around to these bleachers that we're adding. But there's also an existing six-foot fence that goes around the whole facility today as it is as well. Because we're adding this shock put over here, and we're, you know, pushing, we're expanding this over in this area slightly, we've just shown some minor modifications to that exterior six-foot fence. We're not replacing the whole six-foot fence.
Okay, so the eight-foot fence, site fence, is just a temporary fencing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then in the diagram, or the rendering, it shows, it looks like there's fence poles across the back of the?
In here. This is what we refer to as the safety netting.
Oh, that's temporary?
Yep. No, it's permanent. It's, and what it is, is they put in poles, they put sleeves in. The turf field basically is like a bathtub, and it's curved. There's a concrete curve around the whole thing, and what they do is they actually put sleeves right in that concrete curve. You know, it's like a four-inch pole, and then they have pulleys and a netting system that you can put the netting up, you know, for protection, particularly, like I said, lacrosse, because that ball could do more damage than most. But, and then during the winter months or whatever, they can either lower it or completely take it out and then put it back up. It's just like big metal black poles with a pulley system, and it's just like a netting, just kind of like a fishnet-type thing that gets pulled up and prevents the balls from hitting people behind the goal area.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt for a second? The two students have to actually read, so they were wondering if we could pause on this, give their presentation, because they have to go home.
Oh.
I'm sorry, just got a text.
Oh.
That's fine. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I said I would ask.
No problem.
Madam Chair, it's up to you.
Yeah, let's just, can we put a pause on that for a second? And, sorry, I wasn't aware of that constraint. Who wants to start?
I'll start as well. Yeah, I'm so sorry. I have to get to basketball practice, and so, yeah, I'm also, as a student athlete, all for this, even though I'm a senior, and so it won't really go to me. This would be awesome. I've heard stuff about our track, and... I've heard stuff about our track and like Trey said, everyone else plays with turf. And so it really is a disadvantage. We've talked about turf before and so I'm really glad to see this project going. So good evening. Mashpee students are looking forward to the holiday break next week and finishing up 2021 part of the school year. Last Sunday at the Christmas parade, some of the National English Honor Society kids did Christmas book reading, which was a fun form of holiday service. Going with that, the Honor Society had their induction ceremony last night, where seniors and juniors who demonstrate service, character, leadership, and scholarship were welcomed into that club. Winter sports have begun with a track meet last Monday and basketball games this week, as well as cheer and gymnastics soon to follow. And those are always so much fun and a great way to show support to Mashpee students. Senior Ava Gonzelves hosted her senior project, which was a powder puff game on Saturday, the 20th, which had seniors and juniors play such a fun football game against each other. And all the money went to the American Cancer Society. And so it was a very fun and very well-done senior project. A group of 10 seniors went to talk to the Mashpee Men's Club at the Senior Center last Tuesday. And we got to talk about our involvement with the community, which was a great way to kind of just celebrate each other, meet some people who will make some decisions about scholarships. And it was just a fun outing that we were grateful to have. The Third Annual Ride for Hunger, which is the spin class fundraiser that Katrina and I and our Mashpee Project 251 team have done, which raises money for Cape Can Meals and Quashnet Cares right here at Quashnet School, is going to be on Sunday at noon. And so even if you can't ride, we're definitely still requesting donations this year more than ever because as our pandemic goes on, childhood hunger and those rates go up as well. And so we're able to fight that here. And so we want to be able to be involved in that. The Teen Mapping Group had another map-a-thon on Monday night, where they had a guest speaker who uses humanitarian mapping in his work with the American Red Cross. And so that was a really cool event because we talk a lot about mapping with Ms. Reynolds and with the people who do it, but it's cool to see somebody using it in their career. The, the College Acceptance Board has started up again, which is a bulletin board outside of Ms. Purdy's room. And we put up the names of colleges and then we put stickers on them for all the students that have gotten in there. And our class is filling it up really fast. We're already at like 40 on that wall. And so we've just been doing a great job with that and that's something that is really fun. And then on Friday, the Honor Society is going to be hosting a blood drive. And it's a very well-planned out project by the club's senior officers. They've worked really hard and so I'm excited to see how that goes. And then, like I said, I do have to run out of you tonight for basketball. But thank you so much and happy holidays as we get closer to the break.
Thank you, Skylah. Happy holidays to you too.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Skylah.
We'll email you all of our follow-ups.
All right, hi, everyone. I hope someone, at least someone in this room is excited for the holidays coming up if they celebrate or if they don't, because I know I am. In preparation for Christmas, National Junior Honor Society decorated holiday cards to go to the senior citizens' home. These cards went to the same place that we sent the Thanksgiving slash fall cards in November. I feel that NJHS really took initiative due to the absence, because due to the absence of Ms. Donovan, our latest meeting got canceled. But still the members, they were responsible enough to meet up with the representatives, collect cards, take their time to decorate these cards, and then still turn them in, which I thought was really nice because they did that on their own time. NJHS also recently had a free gift wrapping, a day of free gift wrapping in the Mashpee Commons, where it was posted in our classroom and students took shifts to volunteer, which I thought was really nice. In student body government, in our most recent meeting, we also spent time decorating cards, although, although these cards were thank you cards that went to the fire department because the fire department volunteered to earn money for the homeless for the holidays. And we also finished and turned in those cards on the 10th. So basketball, as you, basketball is a very popular sport in the winter. But the seniors and the JV, they started a little bit earlier than the middle school. As the middle school started their first practice today after school, so many of my friends were so excited and eager to start. And winter track, they've been up for a while, but they recently just had their, a meet. And their last meet was in the Reggie Lewis Center in Boston, which was so cool to my friend who went. She went on the bus with a group of her friends and it took them like a few hours to get there. So they had a long time to bond on the bus ride, I guess you could say. So that was a very good experience for my friend. The extra after-school curricular TechSpurs has been, in other words, reinvented. So before people made these videos that helped, like, that were guides for older people that didn't know how to like work technology or like younger people, if they just didn't know certain things about like how to work technology, the, the students part of this group would make videos or tutorials to send out to those. But we're actually, we reinvented it to now be like a technology sandbox or technology playground, where anyone interested, any, yeah, anyone, sorry, anyone interested in technology is welcome to go and explore, which I thought, thought was really cool because we don't have as many members. So the members that were originally there can continue making tutorials. But to, you know, gain the interest of more people, we broadened our, like our, like expectations of the group, I guess you could say. So Ms. Weeks, who's running TechSpurs, is also trying to create a book club. And she's trying to make it so that the students who are a part of this book club can read books and make projects or like big like ideas of this, of the books that they read. And they don't have to be specific books, it's just books that they pick. And then the projects can be shown to other students to not only promote reading, but promote the club itself. So as we know, the science fair is another very important topic. And on Monday during homeroom, both honors classes from Ms. Friedman's class in eighth grade had their science fair. Overall, there were 19 presentations in total. And every one, every one of the presentations was so cool, like, like things I had never even thought of, like trying to grow plants with like, like, in different like heated environments. My friend, she used like fire and it actually grew more than a colder environment, which was unexpected. So each presentation was judged by three students who were in AP Science. So each three, every three students were assigned a presentation to grade. And they averaged the grade between those three students and the grade given by the teacher. All, all of the judges were so nice. I personally, two out of the three of my judges, Ava Kelly and Ava Gonzelves, they were super, they were super mature and professional when they graded us. The winners of the eighth grade honor science fair on Monday also did such an amazing job. Leighton McGory and I placed first, while there was a tie between Addie Losh and a second group, Windsor Fancher, Grayor Davis, and Hayden Shavansky. So they tied for second. And then for third, there was also a tie between Jacob Vincent and Sierra Johanan and Alex DeHelian. So Alex DeHelian and Sierra Johanan were a group, while Jacob Vincent worked alone. So you can tell that these, these students worked really hard as there were so many ties. The second science fair took place today and it was for Mr. Oakley Robbins' science class for eighth grade. And we, the winners of the science fair haven't been announced yet, but I'm sure they, they, they did just as amazing as everyone else did. Now, that is it for my presentation, but I hope you guys all have a good rest of your night and a great Christmas break if you celebrate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you say for one question or do you have to jet? So pronounce your name for me again.
Delia.
Delia, okay. I just want to make sure that I say it right, so I'll have to make a note to myself. So these tutorials for the TechSpurs, so how do people find those?
So we, we sent, we give them to Ms. Weeks and she usually posts them through Gmail, like to certain people that are like looking for the tutorials. But we're looking, we're trying to brainstorm broader like ways that we can get them out to others.
So Ms. Carroll, who is our outreach coordinator, Consuelo Carroll, she might be a good person to, she might have some ideas.
Yes, I'll definitely keep that in mind and give that to Ms. Weeks.
Also, I just want to tell you what a pleasure it is to have you here. I, I really appreciate your positive attitude and your just genuine enthusiasm for representing your peers. And it's, it just makes me proud that we get to represent you. So I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you. I love coming out here and representing middle school from the NHS.
Well, we have, a couple of us have middle schoolers, so we appreciate that too. Kathy, Matt?
I just wanted to know, are, are those groups all seventh and eighth grade? Because you, you talked a lot about eighth grade, I just am curious, is there seventh grade graders involved with a lot of the groups you mentioned?
Sure.
The TechSpurs, her?
Yes. So it's harder to get them, like, in the beginning of the year, the seventh graders aren't as aware. But throughout the year, by the end of the year, the seventh graders are just as involved as the eighth graders.
And are the regular classes also doing science fairs or just the honor classes?
Yes, the regular classes, the regular eighth grade science class had their science fair today and the honors classes had their science fair on Monday.
Yeah, and seventh grade has it too, right? They do like their own thing.
But I'm not quite sure when their science fair is, but I don't think it was today.
That's what I, I was just curious. We can, yeah.
You might want to do some more outreach to the seventh graders. Who's got a seventh grader? Don?
Don.
Don, raise your hand. Yeah.
Actually, everyone here has a middle schooler.
Yeah. Matt, any questions?
No, not really questions, just like I appreciate the way that like both you and Claire present to us, like, you know, that dialect, that, that information that we wouldn't otherwise get from the student body. So it's, it's definitely valuable to help us understand when we see other projects, you know, packages or anything else that we're doing to make sure that like, you know, it's going towards something that, you know, you guys are showing us the output, like this is, you know, positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me here and giving me this opportunity.
God, she's so upbeat. She's like the best type woman for Mashpee schools. Don, do you have any questions for Delia? Okay, right. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Have a nice holiday if you celebrate.
You too.
Okay, so we did, unfortunately, did not have a ton of time allocated for the turf discussion, but I want to round you guys back up here to continue Don's questioning.
Well, I have one more question too.
Yeah, okay.
One's Don's stomach is. You want me to go ahead?
Okay, let's have a little variety.
He's referring to me.
Don refers to Kathy for the next question.
I just wanted to clarify, so the, the games will be played on the new stadium, but you'll still be utilizing those upper fields for practices, correct?
Correct.
And so those upper fields, if I'm remembering correctly, they're going to get a little bit of treatment in terms of at least, like, we're still going to be upkeeping them and seeding them to make sure that they're at least used for, used for practices.
And Matt could obviously speak to the schedule more, but the focus will be to have the games played on the stadium field. And then as time permits, you know, to allow the practices, I think Nicole mentioned earlier, you know, it's tough to, to only play games on, on the synthetic surfaces. You really want to practice on it as well. So that would be the plan. And with the lights in, in the stadium, that will allow a much greater use, which in turn will allow less use of the natural grass field. And, and so less wear and tear on those fields and more opportunity for us to perform the necessary maintenance.
And I think that would be the idea, is that our, our older teams, the kids that drive mainly or who pull, are not so much a middle school, the older kids, you look at the six to eight practices, where they would practice after game times, which again would alleviate one team off that field. The field would really take a beating during game because of the lane, the intensity on, on top of those fields.
Don? We have about 10 more minutes. Well, those aren't all for you, so you have, you have like five minutes.
So you were mentioning particularly in summertime or when it's hot, the field would be irrigated. But I don't see that in the plans.
It's, yeah, well, it's.
It's not irrigated.
It's not irrigated. What it is, is all they do, we call them a quick connect. And all it basically does is it provides that they can hook up a hose and, and spray the field. It only when it's hot. It doesn't have to be done and it may never have to be done. It's just something they do, especially with, with that climate change and we're all witnessing much hotter temperatures and whatever. And like I said, the turf just, it, it's reflective. You can see it, it does get a little warmer than your average grass does. And it just gives, you know, I'm thinking you're more like little kid's summer camp out there or something that, that you, you can spray it and then it cools it down for a couple of hours. And it's really just as a backup. Down here on the Cape, you guys, you may not, you, you may not use it.
Okay.
Yes, the schools around us, whether it's found that they use it or not, they rarely have to water it.
Yeah.
Because it just, you don't have that same heat that you have off Cape and Tri Valley. It's like a hockey center.
Yeah.
But presumably if we're using it in the summer for recreation, the activities and stuff, that.
It's good to have.
Yeah, that could be.
All right, so I guess for Kathy, one of the things I see here in this rendering that's carried forward that I don't really appreciate are the porta-potties. And was there any consideration of putting in a more permanent restroom facility for the fields? And particularly it sounds like according to the athletic director, we're going to be utilizing these more and more. What was the thought process?
I mean, the, the focus, to be honest, was, was just on, on providing the, the track and, and the field. That's something that certainly can be considered in the future that would require additional funding to, to build a restroom facility to provide the septic or tie into the wastewater treatment facility. So that could be a phase two of, of this project. But I think the focus for this was just to try to, to replace the, the track and, and the, the field moving forward. We can add that.
It scares me a little bit when we have the same brain. Because I'll tell you, not that you're not smart, Don, but it was just, but it's so funny. That was, when I looked at this rendering, that was something that jumped out at me as well. So I think what I would be concerned about is just.
At least a nice looking.
Yeah, what I would be concerned about is just making sure that we not do anything that would preclude us from putting, you know, like not find out that we have to dig something up that we installed because of this to put, you know, septic in or something.
I mean, they're going to run a water line, so it seems to me that that would be.
The logical next step.
The logical time, if you're running a water line, you should run the sewer line at the same time.
Sewer is a different location. It's certainly something to, to keep in mind. I think we would work with the boosters who were the ones that funded the existing concession building. I think that might be a great future project to actually replace and upgrade that facility now that it probably would have water. I'm sure some of you may be familiar with the fact that, I think they've had to run a hose from the, the school to provide water to the, to their concession building historically.
All right. Two, two more questions and then I'll pass it off to Nicole. So as I understood from the athletic director, 10 to 12-year life cycle, a lifetime on this?
Yeah, on the turf.
On the turf.
Just on this, this part.
Right. But there's an annual maintenance to add fill and all of that?
Yeah, it's pretty minimal though, a couple thousand dollars a year, tops, you know. And, and what it involves, what you do actually won't have, it won't even be that much at the beginning because usually when you put in the new turf fields, the turf suppliers and the infill suppliers, they give you extra. So you'll have that for a couple of years to get you through. But it, it, a lot of it, it's, you know, the groomer, you only do it a couple times a year. And the, a lot of times it's just like in the mouth, you know, the, the infill will get thinner in the areas of the goal because there's a lot of activity there. So it's really a matter of someone almost like with a bucket throwing it out, you know. It's, it's, it's very, you know, pretty minimal maintenance.
I'm sorry, and I know you, you're kind of, so the, the budget estimate does include the necessary equipment to maintain because it is different than the equipment that we use. And this question did come up at community preservation. The, what we would save in the, the cost of fertilizing, adding the pesticide to the field now would more than cover the cost associated with it.
Okay.
And the grooming equipment will actually extend, I feel like, anywhere from three to five years. I mean, you're.
So, so roughly it's half a million dollars, give or take, for the turf itself? Is that correct? If I wanted, if we were going to replace the turf today?
Yeah.
It's about half a million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so 15 years from now, it'll probably be a million. Okay. All right, so, 15 years from now, it'll probably be a million dollars. All right.
And we did two turf replacements this summer. They were both in the $5,000, $500.
And the shock pad never needs to be replaced, just the turf?
The shock pad's good for 20 years.
20 years?
It, it's good for like two cycles.
Okay.
So, and then, you know, the shock pad.
All right. Last question. What's the plan in regard to getting this moved forward? As far as funding, is this, are you trying to get this on the warrant for a town meeting for May?
Yeah.
As a special one?
It would, we would ask that both the community preservation funding, if approved, and the capital funding be put in a special town meeting within the town meeting. Our plan is actually to put this project out to bid no later than February, so that we can have a contractor ready to award once funding is approved, and they would start construction. I think the plan was immediately up to graduation. So that, so that the, the field could be ready to play next fall, fall '22, even.
So when the school starts, or?
Yeah.
That's the whole, yeah.
Okay.
That's the idea.
All right, next question. Go on.
Um, yeah, so, I wanted, I was putting my, my day job hat on for a second, and one, it was something you said resonated with me about the rain and the impacts to our fields. I have it on very good authority from the people who know such things, that the climate signal for the northeast is increased and more frequent extreme rainfall. So the problems that we have are just going to be exacerbated in this changing climate that we're dealing with. Never mind the heat side of things, but that's the precipice. So I think this is really well timed. I've said in other venues that the advantage of going last is we don't have to make the mistakes that everybody else made, like using chrome rubber and some of these other infills. I wanted you to address, Matt, the use of this field by the community. So there are obvious things like spectating, you know, people who go to see their kids play. So we have a lot of families, we have, you know, a large portion of student athletes, many of whom will now get to play in the stadium. But what about the rest of Mashpee?
Yeah, and, and just on your, your point with the rain and the fields, how they affect the fields, that number you looked at just for the turf, and I know Gail came in and looked at our upper fields that had drainage issues, to just tear that field down and to put the right drainage in, to put the right slope in, to tear the field up, I believe the estimate was $800,000. That's to put in a new grass field. So I think sometimes people look at these numbers and don't understand. When you want to redo an entire field, it's not cheap either. I think that's why we're looking at turf. And it really is, most of these fields are community fields. We've had, I think, five built in our league since I've been AD the last 10 years. We've had several built in the Cape, including Falmouth. And I know Catherine is the one who scheduled that for DPW. Uh, it becomes, it really is a community project. The use on that field this summer is astronomical. I, I'm pretty much at the school every single day. I'm at that wing of the building near those fields. By 6 o'clock, there are people running into the track. There's people using the fields, whether it's to train on the field, whether it's on the track. It's every single day. We actually reseeded the middle of the field. Every day, our coaching staff had asked people not to use the middle of the field. It, it, it's very busy. And I think with turf, you worry less about, you know, the, the field usage, and certainly with the track, has to get done. The track is three years overdue. We're down below the rubber at this point. We're down to the black part of the track, which is not a good sign. So it, it really is a community thing, I think, bringing kids in. Not that anybody should ever choose a school because of their facilities, per se, over their education, but people do that. And it is certainly, obviously, a focal point of any school in any community. We have a field like this, and this is where, you know, Mashpee travel soccer would be, whether you put across. There are a lot of things you can do, and it ties kids into the school, the school system, and into the high school and the middle school. So certainly, any project this size, with, that I'm aware of, are all community projects. It's not just about the school. It's about youth programs, it's about people using those facilities, whether it's playing with their kids. And the stuff, you obviously have to be vigilant about, you know, drinks and food and the such on the field. But it really is a community project more than it is for just the high school and middle school.
That's great. Thank you.
I guess one last question. So particularly with COVID, we've had outside events using tents on the field or on the athletic field. Would we be able to do that in the future?
No.
Do you use, like, what, you said tents on the field?
Yeah.
Like for mask breaks and stuff, or?
Uh, like for marker.
Oh, you mean like for graduation or something like that?
No.
No. No.
Okay.
No, we'd be, if we kept those outside, I think Patty.
It would be in the back of the school?
Yeah.
On the natural surface fields?
Okay.
Yeah. We just wouldn't be using the stadium for that.
Okay.
Uh, so I think if you have questions, Catherine, you know, Catherine is the expert. This is her project. And, uh, but I think we have a vote scheduled for later in the meeting to just determine whether we can have a resolution of support for the project. Hopefully, that, then you'll have that when you go back to CPC. And I think, I think families will be really excited to see these renovations finally happening. So thank you for your leadership. We really, really appreciate it. And thanks, Matt and Kathleen, for coming tonight. We really, it was nice to hear and, and see and envision this future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, next we have approval of the minutes from November 17th. Um, I'll make a motion to approve, if I have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Matt. Do we have any discussion or edits we need to make? I think Delia's name is misspelled on the first page.
That's, that's how she spells it.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, it's, there's no Y?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I wrote her name. No, it's Y on the agenda, but.
What, where, oh, it's misspelled in the minutes?
Yeah. Item number seven?
Oh, yes. She has a different spelling in her name. We'll fix that.
Okay. Any other edits to the minutes? Okay, Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So those are approved. So I don't see Stacy here.
So she did text me. She is unable to be here tonight. She is actually doing some contact tracing. I will do my best to sort of give an overview. Let's see, so the routine COVID safety checks, we are in, we finished, one, two, three, four, seven weeks of that. We have about 149 participants, and this past week, we do it every day on a Tuesday, every week on a Tuesday. There were 19 pools and all were negative. We do continue to encourage our families to sign their children up for this, and as well as staff members. It is a nice weekly piece of information. I know I participate, so that you know that you're at least good as of Tuesday. It can change any day. Update on vaccinations. I know that there is an upcoming clinic that the town is running on the 18th for our five to 11-year-olds. Information continues to flow into our district coordinator, Stacy, in terms of student vaccinations, although they're not required to let us know. I know that many of our staff members have already received a booster, and that is continuing. That, again, is also, though, not information that we collect. I believe at the last update, I don't even know where that was, but there's about 72% of Mashpee residents who are in the, is it 16 to 19 range, that are vaccinated. But as Stacy points out, we get the data from the state for the town of Mashpee that does not always, you know, correlate with students who attend the Mashpee schools. So there's a little bit of a mismatch there. Uh, we, we do know that, I believe, Desi today with the commissioner, that any decision related to masks is being put off a little bit into January because of sort of the uptick that we're seeing across the state. You can see, I think you received the latest data dashboard, which was as of Monday night, I guess that is at 8 o'clock. You can see, though, that, so for the month of November, we had 25 students who tested positive for COVID. And in just 13 days of December, we have 31. So there's definitely an, an increase that we're seeing. I know that the staff members who have tested positive for COVID have all been, you know, fully vaccinated. And then some of, yeah, so vaccination is not a safety net for ensuring that no one's going to get COVID. But it is definitely a strategy that everyone should hopefully participate in, so that at least if you're going to get the illness, you will not have, as I understand it, a severe case. And then I believe Stacy's filled in the November data in terms of her health office, and that's down there for you as well.
Patty, can I ask one question, clarifying? So, if, if I, if a student is vaccinated, and, does vaccination status affect any of their, like, whether they're allowed to be in school if they were a close contact or not?
So what, if you're a zero to three close contact, you can participate in the test and stay, and there are sort of different parameters there. But if, you can still come to school if you do not have symptoms. Same with those who are identified three to six. We do note if a student is vaccinated, the letter is slightly different. But overall, it, it just really comes down to whether you're symptomatic or not. If you're showing symptoms, we don't want you to come to school vaccinated or not.
Could I just clarify, with test and stay, that's only for unvaccinated?
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Or not, and actually, the call today with the commissioner, they asked, will you allow us to use test and stay because we're having breakthrough with vaccinated students? And they said, no, not at this time.
So the test and stay program is only for unvaccinated?
Students.
Students. And we have 149 people in that program?
No, 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 the, the routine safety COVID checks, that's pool testing, yes. We don't have that many students in the test and stay. When it does occur, I, I know that Stacy has a conversation with the family to see if they want to, if they haven't already signed up for that, to see if they're interested in that. And, you know, she will meet families at school, and, or in a few cases, she's actually had to go to their house because of work issues, but to make sure that those students are tested.
Okay.
But again, it's really emphasizing that we encourage all of our families and staff to connect with Stacy. She really, truly is our expert. She attends all of the different board of health meetings and, you know, CDC. She is up to speed on everything. And that guidance piece is very important, because it just, it just makes it so much more complicated when a parent or a staff member comes to school with symptoms. They don't think it's COVID. It turns out to be COVID. Then we have a lot more work on our end to sort of make sure that families are aware and watching out for their children for symptoms, and getting a test on a, on a certain day past their exposure date.
Okay, I guess I'm surprised that the protocols aren't different for a close contact who's vaccinated.
Yeah, they're really not. So all of our students in the three to six, and really even some of the zero to three, you can continue to come to school if you are not showing symptoms. Because vaccinated, there's so many breakthrough cases with vaccinated individuals. So they're really looking at symptoms. And the pool testing is really designed to catch an asymptomatic person.
Uh huh. Okay, I just, um, I just feel like we're going to be wearing these masks all year if we don't get vaccination rates up. And if we have no incentives for people to be vaccinated, then I guess we're wearing masks all year.
I will say, based on a conversation with Dr. Parkinson, and he does represent both us and Falmouth, the general consensus of Board of Health and Dr. Parkinson is, you're not likely to have super spreader events when there's large gatherings, because so many who are participating are vaccinated, is what they have told us. And, you know, whether it's, whether you're attending a basketball game or not, it's really choosing, knowing that everyone there is masked. But if that's not a place that you want to go, then, you know, most of our gymnasium competitions are also video through huddle, which is a live video feed. And so families can choose to watch that way as well. But we have not been advised to limit attendance at sporting events, but everyone is required to be masked.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have questions on the COVID-19 report? Okay, next, I think we're scheduled to hear from Dr. Hanscom. On, and I think we have a handout for this. I really wish that, when we were doing presentations, that they could be on the screen, because no one at home will be able to see these.
There, uh, we could put it on the website for sure.
You received an email from Sherri earlier this week with this handout, and we can certainly, I mean, you can.
I can, I can include a link to it in our Friday communication, and, you know.
But to Nicole's point, I think if we did like a live, like, put a screen share for the Zoom, I think is.
Or even had it on screen here in the room, so it could be captured by the video.
Do you want me to screen share?
No, but, because it's going to mess up the Zoom right now, but for the next meeting, I'm guessing we can figure something out.
I, I think just as a general rule, if we're sharing a presentation, it's, it would just be nice for the video to capture the materials that we have the benefit of, but the audience doesn't, so. And I appreciate you putting it on the website with the recording. That, that would probably help.
Okay, so, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, so, you received this through email, so I'm not going to obviously read it line by line, but I'm going to highlight the ways in which our analysis this year was different for MCAS and STAR in particular, and then talk a little bit about AP. So just to walk you through what the slides are going to be, the first three slides are our scores. And then the next slides, the next slide is our process of analysis. And then the final three slides are examples of the ways in which we analyze the data and next steps. So it's just a very high-level overview. If anyone wants more detail, that is absolutely available, and I could be happy to sit down with you. So, first, we looked at overall grade results for grades three through eight for MCAS. So you can see, blue is ELA, red is math, science is green. And we have the percentage of students who fell into each category compared Mashpee versus the state. Exceeding and meeting expectations are where we need kids to be. Partially meeting and not expectations are, you would not pass the MCAS if you fell into that category on the high stakes test. So, um, the reason it is relevant to look at the state versus us this year is because everyone was dealing with COVID, and so there is that sort of equalizer. The ways in which it's not helpful, or the primary way in which it's not helpful, is that not everyone's model was the same. So we're really not measuring the same access for every kid. But I put it here as sort of, some sort of ability, a note for comparison. Obviously, we want our meeting and exceeding up, and we want our partially meeting and not meeting down. You can see for grades three through eight, in ELA, we were better than the state, but it's still not good enough. None of this is good enough. But again, the point is, there are so many variables as to how kids did and why. Also, some kids took it at home, so there were a whole slew of sort of variables that, again, make it tricky. And then you can see math and science for grades five and eight. And the next slide is overall results for grade 10. And you'll see that there's English and math, but the students in the class of 2023 were not required to take an STE test, which is why there's no data for that. And again, you can see 74% of our 10th graders fell into meeting or exceeding expectations, and 59% in math. What's different about the threshold for high school is that there is still, so this is the next generation MCAS. is the next generation MCAS. The old legacy MCAS had different graduation thresholds, and students who are taking the new MCAS in grade 10 currently fall into those legacy benchmarks. So in other words, a student who falls into partially meeting expectations could still have passed this MCAS. There is a threshold line that matches up the legacy to the new test for, and I think it's through the class of 2024 that that measurement will continue. Our AP results, what I was hoping to be able to do tonight was to say, hey, compared to when we were not paying for AP versus when we were, we have so many more kids. We're actually pretty equal, but it's not a great indicator because we were in COVID. We were in a hybrid, and so there were kids who were not signing up for AP because they couldn't imagine doing something like that from home. So I do think our 2022 AP scores compared to our 2018, the number of students taking AP tests will be significant, and I think it will be good for us to look at that next year. You can see just the layout of it is the content areas by color. You've got the number of students who took the test, the number who passed with a three or higher, and then the mean score, sort of where we fell across between one and five.
Can I ask a quick question on this?
Yeah, sure.
What is the difference between the two, English language and compositions?
One is English literature and composition.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I-
Thank you.
I asked the same question when I first started doing this, so. Generally, English lang is 11th, and English lit is 12th.
Thank you.
Okay. And then now to the process of analysis. So again, with it being sort of a year of, you know, crazy, I hate the word unprecedented because I'm sick of it, but it was really unprecedented. So to look at student achievement just on its basis, or even student growth, really didn't seem as relevant to us because there are so many other factors that came into play with how students may or may not have done on this test, given the pandemic. So what we decided to do was look at state standards. So we looked at the mastery of state standards because that is a consistent expectation for us to make sure students access and learn the standards at their grade level. And we were able to look at that data through STAR and through MCAS. And so instead of looking at individual kids on our October 8 day-to-day, we looked at grade levels and then subgroups within grade levels to determine access to the state standards because the function of that was to then inform our instruction. So we could look at fifth grade math and see that almost all the kids did not understand this standard based on the results. And now this year, we know, oh, we really need to do something different so that they do. So that was the process by which we analyzed both our STAR and MCAS data. At the Coombe School, in addition, we also used our Data Wall, which looks at the FOTUS and PANEL assessments that we do for students at the beginning of the year, along with high frequency words and a bunch of other things. But each teacher looked individually at their class, and then as a grade level, they collectively analyzed that data and came to consensus on the needs based on standards. And then from that analysis of the STAR data and the MCAS, they determined hypotheses and started to do a problem solving protocol, which is part of our MTSS process. So each grade level and each content area picked an area of concern, came up with hypotheses about why, and then developed action steps as to how we were going to address that. And that's different from how we've done our day-to-days in the past. It's not better or worse, but it's more relevant to the COVID experience that our students had last year. I'm sorry, my voice sounds terrible, but I have a cold. And then for AP exams, those are taught by individual teachers, so individual teachers analyze those not during our day-to-day. That, that analysis happens separately. Just to note, our pre-K, they looked at our PELI baseline data, and the PELI assessment is one that looks at the things listed there. So that's what they did on that October day. And then the next three slides, like I said, give you an example of what the work, the analysis looked like. So in grade five math, this was a standard that was a strength for us. And why? Because there was a lot of time spent on this standard during the year, and it was part of in-person learning versus hybrid. Whereas this 5GB3 was an area of concern, and guess when we did our problem solving protocol, we realized we didn't get to this standard last year before the test. And so these are the next steps and strategies that we've put in place so that kids do access that standard. Your next slide is grade seven, English Language Arts. Again, you have a strength for determining which piece of evidence best supports an inference from a passage, and we realized that that was a strength of ours because it was embedded throughout multiple units. Whereas essay writing was an area of weakness for us. And what we realized is that we teach it in seventh grade a lot, it's explicit, and, but they, the students didn't have enough experience writing the essay that they were, that they needed to for MCAS in order to be, we need to start it sooner and move the rigor down to the Quasnet schools so that writing improves incrementally, and it's not just seventh grade. Not to say they're not doing writing at Quasnet, because they are completely, but the length of writing and the depth of which they, with which they need to analyze writing, we need to look at our, our scope and sequence of that. And then in high school biology, and high school biology really stinks because they, they only, what's the word? Give out some of the questions, what's, release some of the questions for MCAS, but in high school biology, they released none of them. And that makes it really hard when you're analyzing standards to know, well, what were you even asking, you know? And for ELA and math, you don't get many, but you get some. They don't release any of the high school biology. So the STE department did their best to sort of analyze thinking about what they knew and what they knew of their students. Evolution, the sequence is appropriate, the curriculum is thorough. The biochemistry, they didn't get to that until after the exam. So again, let's look at our pacing and our order of units to see if we need to adjust. So those are just examples of what it looked like, the analysis and the next steps and how we're moving forward. I thought that would be more helpful than sort of going line by line through the data. But again, I'm always happy to, I love a good dataset, so I'm happy to do that with anyone who wants to. Any questions?
So I have a question. I, so looking at the, the MCAS results, I mean, it, it seems like, I'm just, I don't know if my intuition or my logic on this follows, but it seems like perhaps the older kids were a little better, like, they were able to adapt a little better to COVID, like during the constraints of COVID than perhaps our, you know, elementary and middle school kids, where it seems like we didn't, like, just in terms of folks not meeting, we're well under the state averages at the high school level, but at the elementary level, we seem to be, while still under, you know, much closer. And instinctively, that kind of mirrors what I saw with my younger child, is that, that, you know, the remote learn, the hybrid, you know, there was a lot that was different. Have you guys thought about, is that what you're asserting with some of this?
I think that's not to be dismissed, because, but I will say, there were plenty of seven through 12 students who really struggled with the hybrid model. My feeling is so much of our learning is cumulative, that those older kids had more years of learning and more years of testing than the younger kids who really hadn't had that experience. And I think, especially in math, the mathematics is so cumulative, you really have to build on form or skills, and, and they just never had that chance. So again, that's not a scientifically validated, you know, it's just an assumption. But I think, I don't know if, Mrs. DeBoer, if you have other ideas about that?
No, I just think there are a lot of variables to try to, if we could, if we had the crystal ball and could identify the variables that affected each of our students and develop that plan, but there, it's just, no two students are alike in their in-school experience, in their home environment, and whatever COVID's impact was in their world. So I think it's just really a challenge to come up with sort of specific plans and generalized plans in response to last year's MCAS.
But that's where looking at the standards, that's a non, you know, it's a, it's a, I can't think of the word, it's flat, it doesn't change. What is that word? Not a variable? Constant, thank you, that was what I was trying for. It's, it's a constant. And so that was where we thought that analysis would be the most useful for improving our curriculum and instruction.
I also know that plenty of parents, there was discussion of them not taking MCAS during last year, so were the, were the numbers lower in terms of how many people took the test?
Yes, but not significantly enough that it would have, that it changed our accountability or anything like that. I think the lowest was 92% participation rate. I don't remember what grade that was for, but nothing went below that for participation.
Okay. Well, I tried. I guess I didn't bring the numbers down low enough. Okay, let's see. Any more questions for Hope?
Hope, in the past, we've had a document-
Go ahead, Don.
Huh?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Could you go in the mic, though, because it would help me, I'm sorry.
In, in the past, we've had a document that showed the progression over time.
We deliberately did not provide that for you because it does not seem appropriate or relevant, given the pandemic. And it's, it's really not.
And, and the state had told us not to compare to a prior year MCAS.
Okay, all right.
Almost makes you think they should have not done the chat.
But somehow magically, the growth, the growth was able to be identified, some magic math formula that clearly goes beyond me. But, but no, to be fair, it's, it was not the same experience for kids last year, it just wasn't.
Yeah. I sense you have a follow-up.
I do, but I don't have, there's no answer to it, so.
Okay.
Send me an email, though.
Well, I think to Don's point, it's almost like these numbers don't mean anything. If we can't compare them to anything, and the state's saying not to compare them to anything, it's like they're throwaway numbers, kind of, basically.
Once again, why we chose to look at state standards, because that was relevant, and that was actionable, and that was something we could control.
Yeah. I guess my, my biggest concern, regardless of what this piece of paper says, was whether or not kids fell behind from where they should be relative to their capabilities. That's my biggest concern.
I would say the answer is yes, and we have lots of evidence of that.
Right, and that, therefore, you know, our focus, and I believe your focus has been on how do we mitigate that? Get them caught back up, get them to where they can be successful. So when they have to take this again, that even if it's in a post-COVID environment, that, you know, we definitely would see something different than what these results are.
So that was what the, the folks who were analyzing by grade level, that was their charge, was, okay, so what do we do differently? And so I gave you some examples, but there's pages and pages for each grade level of what they're doing differently. And at the same time, the students and staff, but students' social emotional well-being and their, their sort of response to the trauma, the collective trauma of COVID, but then individual traumas that have been exacerbated by the pandemic, that is our number one sort of primary focus right now, because otherwise, none of this can happen. So it's, it's so multi-layered and faceted, Don, that it doesn't have an easy answer, but it's what we spend every second of every day thinking about and hopefully doing.
Well, I think we would be hard pressed to say that we were out of the impact of COVID on our daily lives and on the students' lives. There's still needing to wear masks, you know, there's still restrictions on spacing, et cetera. And until we get to the point where we don't have to do that, which doesn't look like is going to happen anytime soon, you know, we're, we're going to be in this kind of hybrid world and, you know, continually struggling to do the best that we can. And I know that you're, you and everyone are trying and doing their best, but I do feel for our kids and the overall impact that this is having on them, along with everybody else.
And I was just going to add, we, we all know that the 2021 MCAS was a compliance to a federal mandate. No one felt it was something that should be happening. I also hope, which I don't know if it will or not, but that those who develop the test are taking into account that across the country, our, all students aren't really where they're supposed to be, and not to create some unrealistic expectation of attaining a certain level because we're not double timing ourselves to sort of meet something, you know, to make up a gap of a year and a half of challenged learning. But, I mean, that's a bigger question, but I just hope that those who develop the 2022 MCAS are taking some of that into consideration as to where they expect children to be.
Agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, I hate to move on from this, it's a really big topic, we could, we could really discuss it all night, but yes, onward. So Dr. Hanscom also on the MMHS block schedule evaluation.
I'm sorry. I thought I was finished, so I'm very sorry.
That's all right.
And my voice is so messed up that I absolutely didn't like to-
Do we have anything? We don't have anything in our packet about this, right?
No, we had our, our, the last meeting we had was yesterday. Oh, mother of goodness. All right, I'm going to go over chat. Yesterday, the, the joint team met, thank you. It was the first meeting that, they had two meetings, one in September, one in October. This was the first one that I was co-chairing, and Megha McCauley, who's the vice chair of the MTA, and I are co-chairing this group. We had met ahead of time to sort of see where they were at and see where we were going to go moving forward. Unfortunately, at that meeting, I discovered that the, the group had started to take a path that was completely out of line with the MOA. So we had the sort of challenge to let the folks know on the committee yesterday that what they had been promised and sort of told was not going to, that was not the charge of the committee. So we spent some time on that, really indicating in the MOA, it's very clear that the charge of this group is to determine, is to evaluate the efficacy of the block schedule, and that's period, the sum of total of it. So I think it went okay because it was just was what it was. And the next steps, we've done a student survey to get their feedback on the block schedule. We are analyzing the qualitative components of that survey in groups, because there's 361 students replied. They had multiple ways and times to do it, but that's what we've got so far. And then also, we are putting together a list of other data that we want to use to analyze the efficacy of the, of the block schedule. And so once the, the folks, we asked them to give us what they wanted by the break, because then Ms. Lee, who's the executive administrative assistant at the high school, Mrs. Menitsky, Ms. McCauley, and I will work to gather that data in, so that they have it before the January meeting. We are still on target to make a decision or to make a recommendation to the school committee by May 2, because we can go ahead and start scheduling in March, because in Power School, both options that are on the table are already built. So in March, just as always, students will start to pick their classes, get recommendations from teachers and so forth. But the, the committee itself is limiting its scope to what is in the agreed upon MOA.
Good.
I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Can I turn my mic off now? I think I'm done.
Yes, both of them. All right, Patty, you got a long report here. I'd appreciate any brevity.
I'm going to go-
Don't repeat anything that Skylar said.
I'll, we'll try. So quickly, professional development, we had a half-day on December 6 with our staff, and we were fortunate enough to have Dr. Kalise Warnum in person. We were six foot spaced in the gymnasium at- We were six-foot spaced in the gymnasium at the middle high school, and she was very impactful, had great feedback from our teachers. She really focused on culturally responsive education, what's going on in the classrooms, she talked about equity, and then she talked about hidden rules. So obviously, 90 minutes with Dr. Warnham is not enough, and we are doing our best to have her return, she was so well-received. We did have our second quarterly Mashpee Public Schools, Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Partnership Meeting on December 7th. You do have in your packet sort of the ongoing update, so just to highlight, as of the December 7th, the additional accomplishments, we did have our flag-raising ceremonies at every school, there are two book-sharing boxes that were dedicated to two Native American students who we lost. The November activities for National Native American Heritage Month were outstanding, and there's, you know, shout-outs to those members of the tribe, particularly who made that memorable, not only because of the learning opportunity, the history that was shared, it was just done very well. We are hoping to have another similar event in the spring and actually make it much more of, not just sort of the month of November activity. Dr. Curley, our Director of Special Education, provided professional development to the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Education Department, and that was very well-received. Now, at the Quashnet School, we have MPS alumni, Nikia Hendricks, who through the Tribal Education Department is here, I believe, every day 11 to 1, and he is working with Native American students, having lunch bunches and interacting with them at recess time, he's been a wonderful addition. WLRP is currently providing after-school language and culture opportunities for our Native American elementary students, and Tudy Coombs is doing that at the Coombs School, and Melanie Roderick comes and does that after-school at Quashnet. And then we talked about sort of being better at communicating in terms of when a Native American student or family is facing some challenges with DCF, and that we want to make sure that we reach out to the Indian Child Welfare Act Department at the tribe to ensure or to work with them to make sure that no Native student is removed from a Native home and not placed in another home, if they have to temporarily be placed out of their house. At the top of the note summary are just some things that we're still working on, our next meeting is March 15th, and hopefully, prior to March 15th, we will have our scheduled basketball game with, at the Tribal Government Center. Next is-
Was there any discussion about the rescheduling of the Joint School Committee Tribal Council meeting?
No.
Okay.
No, let me check. You'll have the enrollment page in as well, I don't know if you have any questions on that, you see that it's 1,487 students for, as of December 9th, and then you also see the data from Dr. Curley in terms of our special education students. You see school choice there as well, and then the other data on homeschooled, Cape Tech, and Sturgis.
When will we know the outbound school choice numbers?
It comes through DESI, so I don't know, Ashley, is there a timeframe?
I haven't, no, I haven't seen anything come through yet, but I track monthly.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make sure it gets added as soon as we do have that. In terms of personnel, you have that sheet as well, Jasmine Silva, she's actually our new varsity girls' basketball coach, but she's also coming on board as a para. Josh Menitsky has been hired as a long-term substitute math teacher. Kaitlin Kelleher is a special education teacher, she is replacing Jackie Ristalis, who retired. Josh Menitsky, by the way, he is taking the place of Sean Checoyne, I probably said that name wrong again.
Oh, okay.
Oh, he is a math teacher who retired. Julie Lind is a paraprofessional at KCC, she's taking the place of Taylor Stasis, who was a paraprofessional who resigned. Anne Marie Donovan Needham is a Title I teacher, she's a long-term substitute for Jen Kenny, who is out sick. And then Lisa Martin is a paraprofessional, she is a long-term substitute for a para, who stepped up to teach second grade for the rest of this year. And then down below, you do see the resignation of Mark Belstracci, Sean Checoyne, Jackie Ristalis was a retirement, and Taylor. And, yes. Actually, I don't know, I think we did talk about it, but maybe it wasn't there, but Ellen DeMello is retiring effective December 31st, and so that Human Resource Specialist Unfilled is what we have interviews set up for, I believe, next week. Any questions on that? All right, next is the leadership transition. Dr. Hanscom and I have made the decision to sort of co-assume the responsibilities of the middle high school principal. It's not sort of an ordinary thing to do, but we feel it is in the best interest of the students and staff. This is not an ordinary school year with the whole recovery from COVID and still experiencing so many of the COVID protocols, that we do not feel that there should be any additional changes that students and staff have to navigate. And we are working it out sort of on a, on a day-to-day basis, we have met with, we have a lot of meetings tomorrow with students. We have indicated to students that we are going to begin the process of finding the next Mashpee Middle High School Principal in probably the January, February timeframe, and prior to that, we will be asking the students to help us develop the portrait of a Mashpee Middle High School Principal. We will also be asking staff to contribute their thoughts in that same task, and then our families as well will be asked, and so those three stakeholder groups, hopefully, will sort of merge into sort of creating the vision of the person or the skillset, the knowledge and skillset that we would be looking for. We did, we are telling the students that ideally, the best qualified candidates do not leave a district in the middle of a school year, and so we don't expect someone to come on board till July 1st, that's not to say that it might not happen, but that is sort of what we're presuming, we hopefully are going to be able to find someone with experience, maybe a sitting principal in another district that really has a lot to bring to our district. So the plan is to get that off the ground, and there will be student voice along the way in terms of their contribution to the portrait piece, but also, there will be students on the interview committee along the way, as well as parents, and multiple members will have a very varied group of people on that committee. Do you have any questions specifically about the transition? Just quickly, I know that we have Principal O'Brien here, and Principal Goulart, if you want to take a couple minutes just to do a couple highlights.
Yeah. It's a Thai law jersey, just so.
Oh, yes. Vintage.
Okay, so at KCC, we are celebrating 12 Days of Fun, we did some activities with Hanukkah, we dressed in candy canes, we celebrated the PTO, the pandemic from us to now, we had the Giving Tree events, and today was fourth. Okay, so the Giving Tree event was held Friday night outside, it, it was either cold it outside or not have, it's a tennis, it's so many people really enjoy it. Big shout-out to the Pulse team, and one of our PTO parents, Amy Sherman, that looked like a little winter wonderland out there, it was really, really festive and pretty. And Judy Malio and Max Pitt did a story walk on the Giving Tree that they put together, it was hot cocoa, or it was warm cocoa, cocoa too. Thanks to Gus, we had a cookie station, and then Santa arrived with a couple of cruisers that brought him, so it was a great one. And, and as you know, the Mashpee community was extremely generous, and there were many, many good parts that we are able to donate to our family's community. And we are still in the process of collecting food and cash for Mashpee High Student Hannah Rogers Project to help feed the hungry Mashpees. We've already oversold our big, huge plastic bin, and we've gotten some money donations, so the drive-down's on Friday, so we're looking hard for that one. The new data walls have recently gone up, this is a different data wall than one holding the county, which is another conscious data wall, this one's actually self. It serves as a visual for teachers to be able to see how each of their students progress in both math and English by the darts. As the students progress, their color changes, so it's, it's really visual, it's really colorful and helpful, I think, for the teachers. Students are in the next recess this week, as they once again build up the Falcon Nest by demonstrating how they follow the Falcon path, and that's a lot of fun, it continues the day, the students will have their extra recess tomorrow. And my last bit was about welcoming our new personnel, but kind of, I was just-
I'd love to see a picture of that data wall.
I'd love to see a couple of them.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The only problem with that is there are student names on that, so it would-
Oh, it's more like I just can't visualize.
A vision, oh, it's like when you see my names on the stickies in my-
The posters.
Except they're color-coded based on level of performance.
Oh, so each color, each poster has somebody's name on it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you could see it in person.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just quickly from Quashnet, it really is a season of giving, and it is, that idea of connected community is really exemplified this month, and I have to thank the NOS, they support us tremendously over the holidays, and even his patrons. We also have great donations from Mashpee Auto, which was formerly Mr. T's, with their mitten drive that comes directly to benefit our families. Mashpee Police, which offered the cup, is sponsoring several students here this year. Barnstable County Sheriff's Department with Christmas tree donations, we also had other Christmas tree donations from another landscaper in town, who just dropped off a couple trees, it was fabulous. We have about 300 brand-new knit and crocheted hats to give to all of our students that were dropped off this week, along with quotes from various different organizations. And one great shout-out, I have to really acknowledge this fifth grader, she made these beautiful bracelets and had them for sale for $5 each, and she was able to raise $270 for Quashnet Cares. So congratulations to Kiba Assad for just being that wonderful community person that she really is, and so it's really been a fabulous celebration, really, of our community, and really, all those connections that we have. So thank you, on behalf of all of our, our support. And did I mention the Falcons, Southport Falcons as well, because they're just so lovely for us, and we appreciate that. One of the other big things this, this month was the Falcon Bucks, which was a PTO fundraiser, and they brought in over $12,000, which is outstanding, so we're very excited about that, and out of those, that money, 2,000 goes out in prizes, but they netted approximately $10,000, which is quite, quite impressive, and it all goes back to students and teachers, it goes to support classrooms, so we're really appreciative of all that the PTO does. And you know, the superintendent mentioned Niko Hendricks, and Niko has just been a fabulous addition to our lunch function, our recess blocks, where he comes in and he works with kids, meets with kids, just enjoys children, and they are amazing. He's so tall. They just are really responding so positively, so it's been really, I'm so grateful for his addition here at Quashnet School. One other shout-out I really need to give to Mr. Williams, Mr. Jackalow, Mrs. Till, Mrs. Boyd, and our Quashnet School Student Council, were in first place at the Mashpee Christmas Parade, and it was very exciting to see their flow, and it really, the theme of the whole parade was celebrate, and they chose to celebrate diversity and celebrate students around the world, so it's really very, very appropriate and very, very well-done, so we're very excited about that. And if you're not doing anything on Saturday, the 18th, at 1 o'clock, the Quashnet Theater Group will be presenting at the Van's Stand in the Natural Commons, and that is through the Quashnet Theater Group, led by Gillian and Estee, so it was one of our actual and long-term staffs who've done a beautiful job pulling in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders to put on the, our Christmas Carol, so it should be a really fun time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marky.
Also, in your packet, you have the Athletic Directors' update, and you also have our Outreach Coordinator's update, I don't know if you have any questions on that, those are in your packet. In terms of acknowledgements, and, and you do have a copy of the Enterprise article, that'll be in this Friday's paper, but I do want to capture a few items on here in terms of acknowledgement. So I want to say congratulations to our Director of Instructional Technology, Suzie Brooks, for completing a year-long data, student data privacy course with the Future of Privacy Forum. Ms. Brooks was one of eight individuals out of a cohort of 98 who was selected for a Merit Award, and anyone who finished the course can now have their district applied to be a COSN, which I'm not sure if that's cosign, but Trusted Learning Environment Seal, which is a mark of distinction for school systems, signaling that they have taken strong and measurable steps to ensure the privacy of student data, so I just want to, you know, shout-out to Suzie for taking on that, and she said it was a very intense course, and not everyone who started was able to finish it, so she's always sort of growing in her own learning and making the district better. I also want to acknowledge Isabella Egan, Evelyn Proventur, and Jonah Erdman, those are three seniors, and in collaboration with MMHS teacher Celeste Reynolds, for putting on an outstanding TEDx event last Friday, it was entitled Empowered Women, Empower Women, Fearlessly Leading Forward, and they had some very impactful speakers, and that sort of shines a very bright light on the district as well. I want to give a shout-out to Peter G. Francesco and Daisy O'Reilly, they have been selected to the Southeast Senior Jazz Band, it's a tremendous honor, as only one drum set and one baritone saxophone are chosen for the group. Both of these students have also received recommendations to audition for the All-State Festival in January. If they are selected during this audition, they would be recognized as the very best in the state in their respective instruments, and if you've ever heard, they're both fabulous musicians. Peter also plays the piano as well as his drums, and, so anyway, he's a treat, they're both a treat to listen to. Shout-out to Amanda Howe, our STEM teacher at MMHS, she's been awarded a $500 Cape Cod Five Educational Mini Grant to fund her project, which is titled Advanced Manufacturing, Connecting Our Students to the Community Through Innovative Learning Opportunities, and she is looking forward to connecting with Sencorp White on this opportunity for her students. Skylar did talk about the men's club, I just want to give a shout-out to those students who participated, Isabella Egan, Allison Leeds, Samantha Kersey, Cheyenne Hendricks, Skylar Remple, Hunter Toby, Chris Distillio, Evelyn Proventur, Eric Menke, and Colin Spencer. And if you, well, you haven't gone to this, but when you listen to students, they share their educational journeys and their accomplishments, and it's just really so impressive, and the group of gentlemen who attend, and their wives, and they're very, very good supporters of the district, they are just always, it's like the highlight of, of the year in terms of the meetings that they have, and the students are just so poised. They always make a comment about how they remember sort of being uncomfortable public speaking, and none, none of our kids seem to be uncomfortable public speaking, they really represented us very well. So that's sort of it under acknowledgements, and just, I just want to remind everyone that next Thursday is a half-day for students, that would be December 23rd, so I think we've communicated it, but just in case anyone out there has forgotten, students will be getting home early that day, leading into the, the break, and that everybody comes back to school on Monday, January 3rd. And then next, the last item I have there is the FY23 budget, and we, it is in your packet. We did present today to the Town Manager and also representative from the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, and we went through everything, answered their questions, and I don't know if you have any further questions on what is in here, or if you'd like me to highlight anything, I know that January 5th is our public hearing on this particular budget, which is still labeled as mine until you fully adopt it as a school committee, and that vote is on January 19th. So if you'd like me to highlight anything, I would be happy to do so.
I think in the interest of time, I would just say to Matt and Kathy, Don and I both attended this morning, so if you want to hear, you have any questions about how that went, I mean, we, they, we talked specifically about the ELE addition, the staff addition, and some of the questions were around whether we have projections for enrollment that we use to, to plan for our budget in the out-years, which Ashley shared that, you know, she, if- which Ashley shared that, you know, she, if we actually open housing units in Mashpee, we can expect maybe enrollment to go up a little bit. But everyone notes that, you know, our curve is, our line is kind of declining. But, and so we talked about, and also how we handle pay adjustments for non-union personnel. So those were really, and then they asked some specific questions about, you know, the graduation expenses, some of the very same things that we've called out. That's all I have of note. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Dawn? From this morning?
No, I think you've covered it. Thank you.
May I add one acknowledgement that I forgot to because it just came in today was, this is related to Brian Carroll. He's an English teacher at Mashpee Middle High School. He's actually the department head as well. And this is from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Congratulations on being selected to serve as the Grade Eight English Language Arts MCAS Assessment Development Committee. So he will be participating in this, on this committee for two years. And they actually helped develop the questions on, for the MCAS, for Grade Eight ELAs. So we're very happy that he was selected for that.
Only eight of them across the state?
No. It's the Grade Eight ELA.
Oh, grade eight.
Grade eight, sorry.
Sorry, after high five, I thought grade eight.
Not grade eight. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, grade eight.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Well, it was, he was chosen from many applications from qualified candidates.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think next up would be Director of Finance?
So just for my report, there's nothing to know. We are dropping on FY22. Do you have any questions for me in the interest of time?
Not with regard to FY22. Does anyone else have any questions? What about the questions I submitted? Is that next?
I don't know. I'm not sure if you want to send them in.
I can't remember what they are, but I feel like they were important enough for me to send them in.
We actually touched on some of them.
Okay.
One of the questions, there's four, seven questions on the FY23 budget. One of them was about transportation and if we needed to reduce the amount projected because of our replacement schedule. So when we built a budget in the replacement schedule, we only need to replace one bus. And that's the one we did not replace last year due to COVID. So if we go forward with one bus next year, we will have completed our replacement of the whole fleet. In that number, we still do need to pay our dispayments. Those are over seven years, so we're still paying them. And in addition, as we've talked about throughout the last two months, the collaborative increased their driver pay. And so for FY22, they increased it for regular transportation by $72,000. And that was unbudgeted. When I worked with the administration to create this budget back in September, we didn't know how much they'd be increasing it. So when I include that number into what we have projected for FY23, it's only a 2% increase overlooking actuals would be for FY22. So I think that number is a good number to move forward with. And I don't think we should be increasing it at this point.
The 207, 842?
Yes.
And so roughly.
Also special education transportation.
So roughly half of that is one new bus?
No. No, the new bus cost is roughly around $40,000.
Forty, okay. For some reason, I had it in my head that we were replacing three. And I wanted to drop that down. So it only includes one right now. Okay.
And then the increased driver wages.
Gotcha.
Special education transportation had a larger increase than normal. And that's because we're having a hard time finding transportation on the Cape. As you know, driver shortages. So we have to go off Cape and that increases our costs because of the mileage to come back and forth every day.
Okay.
The next question was related to outdoor graduation. Nicole asked if we'd made any efforts to reduce those costs if we were looking at cost-sharing a tent with the town as we did for the homecoming days this year. As Gail talked about, we wouldn't be able to use a tent on the turf field. So we'd have to use the back fields for high school graduation for outdoor. I have done some research on the tent purchasing. It ranges anywhere from $30,000 to $130,000 per tent. And we would need two tents. So with a purchase of a tent, that brings about storage. Also where, who would be putting it up? And those are all things that right now we don't have the answer for because we don't have a storage facility to have a tent that large be stored in. And it should be, have some kind of ventilation so it doesn't get ruined. And then also depending on how large the tent is, DPW might not be able to put it up and take it down. I am having ongoing conversations with Catherine about it. And as we talked about today in the meeting with the town, they're not looking to, we could possibly, but they're not necessarily going to be using a tent going forward after COVID.
Yeah, so I was looking specifically at this year's graduation, which we still intend to hold in the stadium, on the field, prior to the, you know, hopefully the turf replacement. So my understanding, if I recall correctly, graduation was somewhere around half this number because the healthcare pathways was the other portion. So I guess I was just referring to that, like 25 grand or so that we're, you know, budgeting for outdoor graduation. I don't know. I just wanted to see if we could reduce it at all. That's all. It seems like a lot of money.
And we can keep looking. We can call the rental companies earlier in the year so we can secure a lower price. But that is a good estimate based on what we have spent in the past.
Okay.
And then the final question was, do we have any estimates on the HVAC upgrades or the Quashen gymnasium upgrades? And that's in CIP, as you noticed on that page, it does see TBD. Those projects were submitted on our behalf through DPW. And Catherine is working with the vendors to get file quotes. As you know, we're in the middle of a feasibility study for the air quality here at all three schools, the HVAC system upgrades. We do not have the results of that study yet. They haven't told us what the best options are. But once we do, I will have them presented to the committees. And then Quashen, they are waiting on the flooring quote. They haven't received that yet, but we're working with different vendors for that.
Okay. I thought that the HVAC thing was supposed to be coming in December, so.
It's been a little delayed.
Okay. All right, all right. That's all I had. I just wanted you guys to benefit from that.
Thank you.
All right, COVID funding update?
I have nothing to share.
Okay. All right. Next is Subcommittee Liaison Working Groups. So the Superintendent Eval Committee is meeting later this week. I presume we're going to be talking about some things that are not going to be happening. But we'll.
Well, I will present sort of a revised, not totally different, but there might be a couple of other things added in as well because I would most likely be adding, you know, the efforts to secure the best possible Mashpee Middle High School principal as something that needs to be accomplished this year. So I will probably alter slightly. I'm not going to get rid of any of the goals. And then I'm pretty sure I'm going to add that one as well. And I know that the working group, I mean, the Planning for Success Working Group, we met virtually Monday?
Yeah, Monday.
And just a reminder, there is a spreadsheet for posting different things that you might accomplish that fit with specific school committee goals. I will reshare that so it can rise back up to your top of your box. And I think we had a column with sort of people putting things in. I think we'll take that out. And as you add things, just put like your initials next to it in the box that it's in. And that will sort of serve, because I believe in January, there's an actual sort of update in this format on that. So we were just trying to get some thoughts together.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we, that I wanted to sort of, so, I feel like because of COVID, we've kind of lost our connection to the buildings and sort of our presence at some of the community and school-sponsored events. Like I didn't realize we had a float at the parade. You know, like some of that information, I'm just not, it's just not getting to me. And we're not exactly like in lockdown anymore, but we're not like doing a lot of big events in the schools and stuff like that. And that were used, those were usually opportunities for the committee to be engaged. But for example, we have a blood drive this Friday that you can do by appointment. So Patty, you know, just happened to mention that to me. And I was like, oh, that's something I could do, you know? So I think it's just, just reiterating our support in this context, specifically for our school committee goals. But as an outgrowth of that, I asked if we could have sort of that upcoming events calendar be circulated to us so that we can identify events that we can support and attend that sort of nest with our interests or maybe our kids or whatever. But like, I can't remember, when Deb was talking, I was just thinking, God, I can't remember the last time I was in the Coombs School, for example. So maybe there's ways that we can help out or volunteer. I know Consuelo always has opportunities with We Are Mashpee. And she's always been reluctant to ask us because we're already volunteering time as school committee members. But I said that we sort of like being asked to be involved in some of those things because it's better than sitting at this table. It's like we're actually getting to talk to students and parents and things like that. So I think that's.
So I think, you know, we have this page that's always in your packet, but we can do a better job of sending it to you separately. So if you want to notice, on Saturday, January 8th, there's a VEX robotics competition that we are hosting at Mashpee Middle High School. That is a full-day event. You could pop in if you'd like as well. And then different, you know, the all-band night. So I don't, you know, the best way to sort of, I guess we could maybe on a weekly basis, Mrs. Vanetsky share with the committee so that they have, can review their schedule for that. We can decide if they'd like to go to something.
Yeah, maybe Sherry or somebody can just send an email, like here's some fun district events, or Consuelo or something. Like the Mary-Kate event isn't on here, you know, for the Christmas Carol thing. So, not that I looked at this. And I'm saying that it wasn't on here. But Dawn, you were going to say something?
Patty, I thought we used to have an all-district calendar.
We still do.
Yeah.
It's, everything's on there.
That has everything on it that was available online. I don't have access to that or have lost how to access that.
We can send it to you. So through your MPSPK, it's posted on the website. But you can also, like I have it loaded on my phone. So my personal, if both of them come up. And I can see what's going on. So we could either set it up on your phone for you or we can definitely give you the link on a weekly basis. And you can just look at the calendar as well.
Okay, because I remember seeing that a while back that it was a separate calendar, had every event that was taking place. So you could look and see what was going on.
Yeah, I think every event and what might be appropriate for us to attend or participate in are kind of two different things. I guess I was just looking for a, like some invite, you know, like, oh, hey, this is an opportunity, this is an opportunity kind of thing. Sort of whittle that down. The district calendar is kind of overwhelming when I look at it because it's got everything on it.
Right.
Or even like, I mean, are we, I guess my question is, are we allowed to go back into the schools as much? Like with that, the Honors Science Fair, like that would have been something interesting to maybe have.
Yes, so that was not, that was not open to the public. That is why the AP students served as judges. But like last night's Honor Society, I mean, that was in the auditorium. You could definitely have attended that. So generally, you know, so Quashen has a National Honor Society Induction Ceremony coming up. Anything that our families are invited to, you're welcome to. I mean, obviously, as a school committee member, you can come and visit any school at any time if you just sort of let us know. So if, and I will say that I wasn't aware they were doing the science fair like that until it was sort of announced up there as well.
I'm not, yeah, no, I was just using that as an example. Like something that, like as a school committee member, like if we were going to go observe something, maybe.
Oh, yeah, no. You're welcome to come and.
Not necessarily participate in, but even just kind of watch for a few minutes and get a sense of.
And if you want to do a walkthrough in any of the buildings, like I generally do with principals, you're welcome to do that. If you want to sort of see what a learning space looks like at Coombs this year and what one looks like at Quash and the high school, you're welcome to come observe lunch at the high school, whatever you'd like.
Yeah, I think those opportunities, especially for newer members, are great to get you thinking about some of our goals, which are like, how do we increase student voice? How do we address diversity, equity, and inclusion? You know, like some of the things that we've said we want to help support. I feel like unless you're in the buildings and kind of participating in some of the activities, you're only bringing your maybe parent lens to it, so. Yeah, so that, those are the only, are there other liaison reports? Like from the collaborative or anything else? No? Okay. Okay, so we have a vote scheduled on the FY23 district calendar.
That's on page, I believe it's 35? Yes, 35.
Did you make any changes from the first time we saw it? Just the half-day for the 23rd?
Yes, but that was on the first version of this.
All right.
Because it seems to be similar to this year.
So school begins on August 31st?
For students, yes. Kindergarten starts the next day, though. Pre-K and K.
Any questions about this? Anyone? I think that's like the earliest end date I've ever seen on a calendar since I've, because of the way Labor Day has fallen since I've been on the committee. That's like, June 15th would be a dream.
In March, what, just refresh my memory. So we have a professional day on the 17th. We have early release on the 6th.
Yes.
So the early release is for professional development, too?
Yes, generally, we have one Monday a month.
Right.
And we try to have it be the first Monday. It doesn't always work that way, but generally the first Monday.
Our half-days tend to be year-long projects. And the full-days are sort of more altogether stuff. So they're not this day.
Okay.
This PD day in March, is that new? Or we always do that?
We always have, we have one this year as well.
Okay. Okay, I make a motion to approve the school year 22, 23 Mashpee Public Schools calendar.
Second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion? All right, Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay. So, new business. We would like to, would we like to make a resolution supporting the DPW proposals for the MMHS Multi-Use Artificial Turf Stadium Project that we heard about tonight? We have that scheduled for a vote. I don't have exact language that I would put forward, but that would have been a nice thing to have done in advance. Do you have anything prepared?
I don't, but I think the motion would be that the school committee supports the town's endeavors to upgrade the athletic facilities at the Mashpee Middle High School in regard to replacing the track.
in regard to replacing the track and installing a turf field. Because it's, or something like that.
Yeah.
It's almost a recommendation from the town, is it not? Pardon me? It's a recommendation from the town more than endeavors at this point, is it not?
It's a, it's a, it's a-
Project?
Proposal?
Proposal.
So I guess I would like to make a motion that the Mashpee School Committee supports the town's proposal for the MMHS multi-use artificial turf stadium project.
Sounds good. I'll second that.
Okay. A second by Don. Any discussion?
Does that include or exclude the porta-potties?
I sure hope we get some bathrooms there, Don. That would be great. I think one of the things that I was thinking about today is just, you know, in my time on the committee, we've been talking about this project, and I was asking Patty, I'm like, you know, how many student athletes have graduated since we've been sort of talking about this project? And, you know, these kids never get their senior year back, their junior year back, their sophomore, you know, they, this, this year is the year they get, and then they move on to the next thing. And so I would just, I, I think this community is really going to appreciate this project. I think that, I, I feel like what started as this really huge number that I thought would never get through town meeting has become much more pragmatic and reasonable. And I feel like, you know, keeping our schools modern and, you know, addressing the needs of our students while, you know, beautifying our community and really, you know, preserving the means for our community to engage with our infrastructure is, it's kind of like a win-win for everybody. So I'm just really pleased that I can be on the committee when this project comes to us so that we can voice our support for it.
Well, I, I think that one of the keys is the fact that after many years of discussion, they've actually found funding sources that don't require an override or a debt exclusion. That, to me, is the big difference between where we are today and where we were 10 years ago when this was talked about, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Without that, and-
It helps that the price tag has come down a little bit, too.
Well, that's true, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
I think we're going to need to definitely push out those, those, those numbers on the difference of the turf versus upkeeping the grass, you know what I mean? Like, I think when people see that number, they're, they're going to have knee-jerk reactions, even though the numbers come down. But with the sewage project also on the slate, and the wastewater treatment and all that, you know, I think we're going to, we might want to consider explaining that the upkeep of the grass would be, you know, the 800,000, you know, doing, redoing the grass would be this much, whereas this is this for the next 12 to 15 years, you know, like, and making sure we really hammer that home. That's the only thing that I-
Yeah, well, I think-
Might be a, a communication thing that we might want to consider as we're, we're pushing this.
Take a cost comparison.
Just so that people are aware, I think, because that's, I think, where we're going to get community pushback, honestly, but that's just-
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think getting the word out, you know, I think today was the first day I heard Catherine say that our existing facilities cannot support the current athletic program at the Mashpee Middle High School.
Yeah.
So, and she said, we basically have three options, you know, you, you do the turf, or you create new fields somewhere else, you know, or you cut the athletic programs. So, so I feel like this is, coming from the DPW director-
Yeah, and I'm not arguing that either. I agree. I think that is another piece of that puzzle, but I think it would, if we put that also in there, I think, because I know there's some financial hawks who might be looking and wondering.
Plus, we can't fertilize fields anymore, so that's a huge barrier to actually using them.
I think once we do the CPC piece and hopefully have their approval, granted, it has to be voted, and then also the CIP component, then we can create sort of a message and use various avenues to make sure not only the families in the Mashpee Public Schools, but the community members understand the why behind the project and what it's, everything they need to know about it, so there's no misinformation out there. And we'll do, you know, a good job to make sure that that's well communicated before any vote at town meeting.
Great. Any further discussion? All right. Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, so we talked about upcoming events already.
Sherry already sent it, too. She's fast. So thank you, Sherry, because I, I saw the email come through.
Oh. And then the, I don't have any items. Do we have anything to add?
I was just going to add the NSBA conference.
Oh, yeah.
Which is April 2nd through the 4th in San Diego. And so, yes, today was an early bird Tier One registration. There's also a Tier Two early bird of the 14th of January, and then the standard registration of the 31st. I think the biggest thing, well, from having gone to different conferences, is wanting to make sure, if you are choosing to go, that you get a hotel reservation that's close to the activities or to the sessions you want to go to. So I don't have, I mean, I think Sherry can, but I don't have the code to get into that site to, to like, sort of do the mock, and you can register as a group. So I think communicating to Sherry if you are a person who wants to go, and then she can get it, get you registered, and then obviously, you'd want to get your hotel.
Okay.
I've written three numbers so far, just waiting to hear back from you.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So will you help get that facilitated and registered? Okay.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell, we're like, our committee's small enough that that group reservation almost never helps us, you know, because some, if we were Falmouth with nine members, then maybe the group would be a discount, but I don't, we're kind of always right on that cusp. Okay, thanks for bringing that up. Any public comment?
There is none at this time.
Okay. All right, then, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn because at this point, we have got to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and we do not plan to reconvene. So if someone wants to move-
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public meeting and go into executive session for our contract negotiations with the intention to not reconvene open session.
All right. A motion by Kathy.
I'll second that.
Matt will second. Any discussion? All right. Kathleen, yes?
We, we just need to make sure that the full purpose is in the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I guess to amend, so I'll, I make a motion to adjourn the public meeting and move into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene open session.
And I'll still second that.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, I get you, I get you.
All right. Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Don? Yes. I vote as well. Meeting's adjourned.